It's starting. I will call the meeting of the zoning board of Canada Dago, the board. We'll start with the pledge of the flag and then proceed formally.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of Oregon, one nation, under God, and the just little.
I'd like to just observe a moment of silence for our troops. Thank you. Okay, we're starting now with the. Three nine oh seven, nine zero sixteen, whatever about it is from me now, this is. Closed. Public urine, but we need to, we were chosen to wait until I got back, thank you. Discussion among the group here?
I, I can, probably that's my doing more than anything, Chip, because I mean, nobody knows this area better than you. And, and the only question that, that I had was, I do know that's two times of the year when boats are going in and when boats are going out. That's a interesting area along there and then this is pretty close to the road and I don't, I guess, I think you've seen everything there is, it's. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, but it's, it's an interesting area. I don't have any better ideas.
I guess I should say, I have reviewed the minutes from the last meeting. They also went down there yesterday. Talked to someone that, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but. And. A couple of things, I think number one is area that's congested, particularly at those times. The thing I was impressed about, and I think the environmental conservation board was impressed about was that will be, they will build in a separator for oil and water. That comes off of the boats. Now, I think that to me would be a major improvement. Because right now, no matter how hard they try, I think it's impossible to keep those. Fluids out in the lake. The question of line of sight. They're gonna keep the roof line the same as the other one. But the thing is really down quite a ways. I don't think that's gonna interfere much with the line of sight. You know, allow them to work out of the elements. So I don't have a problem. Anybody else have anything I have to add to that?
No, I, I thought the list was reasonable, I mean, the, the. The, the lot is a mess, so there's no working with it and it does give. Shade in on any case of the, that will keep actually boats inside, so there will be a little less clutter outside.
Guess at some point they're gonna try and get their operations more up on North Road, but that's gonna be a while now. Do we vote? Okay, ready?
Applicant is requesting a variance to allow in addition to a pre-existing, or you, you just want the questions? Let me read the. Just the question. The question is, show a variance request to allow in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure with a pre-existing non-conforming use on a parcel in the RLD zoning district pre-granted. Shannon?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. According to the plan, the reason was given at last meeting. I think the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. It's a unique parcel, to say the least. I think it's certainly is reasonable, what you, reasonable to be able to provide cover for. Boys with this kind of heat that we get and, I mean, so.
Yeah, because right now it's blacktop, so that might, that will help.
It does not, does not add. The lot coverage, because it's already, it's all asphalt.
So it's actually improving in a sense with.
Yeah, I think the, the oil-water separation system is a major advantage. Reason why, I think.
That's a concession, I mean.
Can you guys talk about? What this will do to the physical, to the character of the neighborhood? Now, the, the neighborhood could be considered all of that, that neighborhood, that section of the neighborhood is really where. Those German brothers both started and where German brother both end, talk about. I think that this will have a character and.
Think since it covers some of the boats, why it probably would be, at least the boats that are being worked on, it may be less of an eyesore than it already is.
And then, then the, what they showed as far as pictures and everything, it's gonna be a sided. You know, a, a sided structure, so it's gonna be. I, I think it's gonna be an improvement over just.
And right now they have, like, they always have the boats kind of lined up out there, you know, moving them in and out.
Yeah, I don't know how much that would change that.
Well, at least they would be under instead of like covered more, some of them.
I mean, I don't think.
Well, the, I mean, are you talking about maybe the physical dimensions? There are many buildings along that area that are very close to. The road in itself and this is within that characteristic circle.
The one corner of the building on that end is already right, almost on the road anyways, so.
The other building.
You're not, yeah, the one that's, yeah. So not necessarily any closer in the sense.
I don't, I don't think it would change the character of me.
And from. The impact that would have on the physical and environmental conditions in the area. You mentioned the oil and water separator. Runoff water, source water runoff will be controlled through gutter system, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, they did have.
Running directly into the lake.
Exactly.
I think the downspots were going in for the type of separator.
What about how substantial, is this substantial increase given the size of the entire operation there? And that it's really just adding a building over where they're already doing that same work?
It's expanding an existing building by doing.
But it's not changing the lot coverage, right, as I mentioned, so.
Right.
Because of what's already existing.
And it is self-created, but the same time it's a. Tiny little section of lot squeezed down in the lakeside of West Lakeboro.
That was done well before.
Yeah.
Did you wanna consider in addition to your two normal conditions, conditioning it, does Mike, does this have to go to site plan?
Yes.
Did you want to condition it on, uh, maybe. Planning board's architectural approval? You want that, if that siding was something.
That might be good, yeah, absolutely.
They're gonna. That, that's a provision, I mean, it's there, not like.
Yeah, so long as they're gonna redo it, then I could give you the opportunity to have, come up with what you actually want and work that out, planning board. Make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, one, one year. Is Sunday from now, according to. Plans that were to move.
Hold on.
Have you?
Okay, the next is our Nuthygan Road. The request for a new variance was on, on the zoning board, proposed ground mounted tier three. About four point ninety-five megawatts. Energy filter energy system. Twenty acres of a forty-six, seven acre lot in the AR two district. Now, we've had. For the two previous things, we've had a lot of information present, presented, and I think tonight, if you have anything new. Would be fine, but, but I don't wanna go over all the same stuff that's gone over twice.
I also wanna, do you have another copy of this? Can you, can I have it? Do you mind giving it? Like the, I think it's a C F D. If not, I could give it back, even look at mine.
I'm just mentioning how this project, they can't pay out of.
House.
Okay.
See.
Sure. I'm ready, please. Just please write down for yourself and.
Sure, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Ari Goldberg from the law firm Barclay Damon, here to speak. About the Canada Dega CSG one LLC solar project that, on New Michigan Road. Haley from Dimensions here, and Brian from CNS are project engineers here as well. So, Mr. Chair, you're correct, we were here last August, in addition to many other meetings. Since that last August meeting, though, there is not too much new. You know what, go right ahead to slide seven if you want. I just wanna, wanna hit on a few things and talk about the second element of variance test, we only got through the first one, and then this gentleman did just say he's looking to catch up. So, I wanted to just touch upon again the New York State Department of Ag and Markets letter that was. Received on August twelfth and filed with the town. We also, since our last meeting, filed an additional comment response matrix that was done on September five, twenty twenty-five. We then, at their meeting, you remember, I talked a little bit about necessity, we can go all the way down to slide sixteen, flying right along here. All about necessity, how we got to that, that was the first element of the public utility variance test. But there are two elements, as has been mentioned, a little different than the tests you conducted on your first application tonight. The second element is, of course. Whether there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that make it more feasible to seek that variance, the one that we're applying, than to seek alternative locations. We're gonna touch on alternative locations as well as the compelling reasons. I think it's really important for the board to hear the applicant one more time. On alternative locations, there's always been new information passed on from public comments, and I think it's important to bring those threads together in this brief presentation tonight. Why don't we go on ahead? To the next slide. So, here are these compelling reasons. I'm gonna start right off the top with necessity, just bringing it back to that first element. We have the interconnection agreement, we have utility sign-off to locate at this location. This is a five megawatt project that's achieving those state goals. We also have a willing landowner, despite existing leases, she has. Entered into another document that allows this particular property to be used for solar ray. She stands to gain on that current lease, improve her income, and use the property for what she wants to do. And then, I wanna really touch upon quite a bit about community intrusion in this case. We talked a lot last week, time I was here, about court cases and how they help interpret the law. Well, there's another one here, that same consolidated Edison case versus Hoffman. Where the intrusion or burden on the community is minimal, the showing required by the applicant is reduced. And here, our position is that the community intrusion is minimal. Jump right to the next slide. Here are some of those reasons. We have a negative declaration under the state environmental quality review app. That's a determination by the planning board of this town that there will be no significant adverse environmental impact. And I think I might have said it before, before this board, but environment, when you talk about seeker, it's a very broad word. It means not just grass, trees, flora fauna, it's traffic, community character, it's your ag plan, it's the continued impact of changing the use of a land. How did the planning board get to that determination? Well, it's a coordinated seeker review. They coordinated with you, they coordinated with town departments, and they coordinated with some of these agencies that are listed on the PowerPoint slide, like New York State Ag and Markets. Where, who determined that there's no significant adverse impact. Army Corps of Engineers determined that no permit is required. That means we don't have a federal wetland impact. Fish and, US Fish and Wildlife, they told us, you had, you may affect species, but you're not likely to adversely affect them. New York State DEC, no jurisdiction for state. And the State Historic Preservation Office, which also looks at archeological resources, told us no impact from this property. We also went to the county. Sorry, I should wrap it up. That was seeker, that's part of how the planning board got there. Another evidence that the community intrusion is minimal, we went to the county, part of general municipal law referral. The county recommended approval of the project, but they wanted to. Note that, in a way, the land is still part of agricultural production. That was in their minutes. More compelling reasons, we have a pretty robust landscaping plan that went through your environmental conservation board. They made a recommendation that included that the landscaping should be cared for further into the operations of the property to help with that visual buffering. One of our first submittals, I think it was exhibit thirteen or fourteen to our initial submittal, was a report from. Cone Resnick saying that when you locate a solar array of this size in communities, property values do not tend to go down. We have a design project here that has a good site for construction, easy in and out for our vehicles, large turning radius. We have a robust O N M plan and decommissioning plan. We talked about customer savings, anyone who subscribes can get approximately ten percent off. Increased tax revenue when this property is put to this use as opposed to its current use. And then another thing to take note of is a host community agreement, sometimes referred to as a host committed, community benefit agreement. There are three taxing jurisdictions, the town, the county, and the school district. Of that pie, the town gets the lowest amount. However, the town is often the one left hosting the. The use. It's your land, it's the town's land, Joan Taylor's land within the town. So, host community agreement recognized that this shortcoming within your tax revenue and puts additional dollars to direct payment to the town to use for general funds. That's another example of minimal community intrusion. Got another slide on this. Okay, let's talk about another big one, agricultural tax and the loss of farmland. It's, you know, it's the, one of the elephants in the room on this project. And I think the question that I wanted to ask out loud is, how do we estimate the impact from the loss of the type of farming that's occurring on this property currently? But the installation of energy generation plus grazing and meat production on the property? Is that a one-for-one loss of agricultural land? If, if it were, or if this property was being put to a more impactful use, like, like a residential subdivision, you'd be losing that ag land entirely. And this was calculations done by our engineers, based on property class, got twenty-five acres of ag land on our property that is being lost. That's zero point oh two percent of the entire land within the county. Point two-three percent within the town, based on our calculations. And then, if you wanna take a step further on how we sort of try to actually measure. Loss of ag land and how much that does maybe intrude on the community? Well, our landowner is gonna realize increased income, and perhaps that's going to give her the impetus to preserve her other farm holdings. We talked with her extensively about this. It's something she's very interested in now that this property is being maximized. And then I wanna, the last compelling reason, do you mind going to the next slide, please? Is, of course, let's talk about alternative locations. So we talked about all the compelling reasons that make the variance feasible. Is it feasible to go to a different property? An important legal point before we dive into this. The most recent case that's helping Dimension and us sort of understand the public utility use variance. There's no legal requirement that the applicant, Dimension in this case, analyze each and every possible parcel of land before obtaining a variance. Central requirement would be unworkable, and the court goes on to say you can't simply move the project elsewhere. That italicized line there, each and every possible parcel, that's in the original court case. So, there's been two sites that have been raised. We, we brought them up in our site selection affidavit that was submitted by our team at the initial phase. There's two sites zoned industrial in the town that have, have come up. And if we feel these alternative sites, we're just trading concerns that we've raised here for other concerns on that site. And to thus, that's not, it's therefore not feasible to go to a different location. So, let me go down to the next slide, please. Thank you. Those are the two properties. It's probably easiest to refer to them as S B L one one ten. One ten, then S B L one, S B L one ten is the left, obviously, one, and then S B L one hundred, it's on the right here. We identified these two parcels initially in our site selection affidavit. We, those are from a desktop analysis, how we sort of demonstrated constraints of the site, looked at the site, and eventually Dimension moved on from the sites as feasible for the five megawatt. Both those parcels, they have proximity to the airport. We have addressed concerns over how we went through the FAA criteria and reviewed that. That's in all the neighbor comment responses. I believe we also responded directly to, I think it was Chairman Salar about this exact point. We also have at these two sites access concerns. So if you're looking on the left side of the screen, S B L one ten has Sucker Brook running right through it. It's immediately abutting town-owned land, and there is a bridge over the brook on the town side. It starts, the access point starts on the privately held parcel, one ten. We don't know the condition of that bridge. We don't know if it would require a new crossing from the Army Corps or whatever entity has jurisdiction over Sucker Brook. That could drastically increase construction costs. So, when Dimension is doing their desktop analysis, they see something like that and they have to move on. There's also the issue of the forested area in the north. We think because of it, it reduces the workable acreage of that property pretty significantly. And also, we've sort of explored exactly what's going on, on the town side of that property. And it looks like there's significant stormwater improvements made to help with drainage in that area, and then it feeds into Sucker Brook. So really, that parcel's not workable. So most concerns about wetness are also applicable to S B L one hundred on the, on the right side of the screen. There's that similar forested area in the north. It's pretty small as well. If we consider the required landscaping setbacks and access, you get a much reduced array. So it's not feasible for the five megawatt. And then the other thing about both these parcels is, it's to me, it's right near the city line. We don't know exactly how the city feels. It's right near improvements in the city, the Sands Family YMCA, and it's right near improvements in the town, the parks along Outhouse there. So when I'm saying traded concerns, I think what we're getting at is. We might not be impacting tag land here, but there's more significant impact of U shed, we have stormwater concerns. And different kind of clearing of vegetation, and we just have smaller lots that don't accommodate what we can be due on New Michigan. As a result, it's our conclusion that it's more feasible to grant the variance of the project that's in front of you. We have a willing landowner, significant visual buffering, a, you know, a determination from Ag and Markets that the project will not have. Unreasonably adverse effect on the viability of farm enterprises within the state or the district. And you have this unique agricultural tax plan, that's gonna be one of the first of its kind in this area and can be used as the benchmark if there is any future solar development. Those are our compelling reasons. Thank you for allowing me that time. Haley's here, Brian's here, I'm here too.
Size of those two lots?
Uh, S B L one hundred is twenty-five acres. Haley just asked me this question third right, it's one. I've got it right here. The property on the right is twenty-nine point four acres. The property on the left, S B L one ten, is thirty-two point eight acres. Both are smaller than the Michigan Road. Which is forty-six acres. Thank you. That's our copy of the.
Yeah, that's you. Any comments from the public, again, from the like, people that have already rested their opinions in the last two meetings or previous two meetings? Would like to hear new comments?
Yeah, I don't know if this stuff's been talked about. Or. Start with your name and, and address, location and.
My name's James Mc.
Yes, sorry. Three minutes?
Sure.
Then, easy.
I live at, I have a property at twenty-three twenty New Michigan Road, which is right across the street from this project. So, um, you know, I mean, there's, it's, it's, it's sixty-nine, one point five three five two two, so it's that strip. Right up there, yep. See where the barn is? Yeah, that's nice. Um, so, you know, we, we all had these concerns about aesthetics, changing landscape, but I know that that doesn't really apply to here. I think my two biggest concerns are based on the requirements for, for that, this to be approved. Is, is a benefit to the community. I think we all assume that an electric, solar, having power electric is a benefit to the community. However, it, I don't know if it's, if it's needed. The population in Canada Dago has not changed much in the last fifteen years. In the last one year, it's changed by zero point zero one percent. It's projected to be pretty flat for the next five years. My other concern is that. You know, the county just did a health equity and inclusion survey, and number two on the list is. Threats to growing your own food. Nowhere on that list is energy dependence. I can find out that survey for you and get you that on the left. The two. The, the tiny increase in our population, believe it or not, is the Mennonite population. We have a lot of farm workers as well. Now, the farm workers here, we've built quite a. A support structure to help these farm workers contribute to the community as, as, as they do. So, by taking away farmland, we're, we're taking away our, our, our primary. Character and our, and, and what we do in this, in this area. I also, so that's what I have about need, so I think that needs to be considered. I mean, I think everybody assumes there's a need. But I don't necessarily know if that's clear assumption. I don't know if it's a benefit to the community. Now, as far as sites go, I know you referenced that it's not feasible to look at each and every site. And I don't, also don't know if the requirements by the state is to be in the town of Canada Dago or to be in Ontario County or close. We're not talking about a lot, a lot of sites to look at. There's probably five or six industrial sites, commercial industrial sites that are available in Ontario County. So there's not a lot to look at. So, I think saying that it's not feasible to look at it, but also it's a requirement. To see if there's an alternate site, kinda doesn't mesh with me. That doesn't make sense to me. So if it's a requirement. But it's not feasible to, to look at it, I, I don't know if that argument makes sense. I have a list of some properties that are available. There's one right down the road in Bloomfield that's available. These are all similar. This, that's on West Park Boulevard, that is industrial. All these are industrial. I can.
And submit those for the record, please.
Sure.
Then you're just about to set your time.
Sure. And lastly, I guess I would say. You know, the biggest concern about the threat to farmland is that there's unforeseen consequences. We all know there is. And that's why they call it unforeseen. It would be a shame to put something here that ruins the farmland. There's a reason why we have zoning, there's a reason why we concentrate industrial and commercial projects, projects in certain areas, that way unforeseen things occur. It's key to me, and it doesn't ruin farmland. And that is something that I think is, that Ford really needs to consider.
Anyone else? We have, for the record. One, two, three, four. Five. Parcels located in Bloomfield, Bloomfield. Victor. State Road three thirty-two, someone assumed, oh, no, excuse me, farming ten. And Victor, well, one more located in Bloomfield. Well, that variance for the record. From Loop Net.
Anyone else in the audience, any further? Anyone at home have anything?
We did receive immediately prior to the meeting. From Eastern, this is Brockle Bank, a memorandum of lease dated December ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Indicating that Brock Acres is leasing ninety-six point nine acres of land. From Joan Taylor for a fixed cash amount for the year of twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. from Joan Taylor for a fixed cash amount for the year of twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. Uh, signed by Mrs. Taylor and Scott Brocklebank. Expires December thirty-first, thirty-one. New Michigan Road six four point zero zero dash one dash five four point four one zero. And New Michigan Road five five point zero zero dash one dash three point two zero zero. But that be, that's in the record as well. Are these, um, power points available on, um, on the application?
So what type of, uh, I mean, what does that present us? I mean, they've got at least, they've just got at least.
Well, it's something for you to consider. Any other information, um, on that matter? Um, the committee of the public hearing gained more information, but I don't think it's necessary for you to do so. This point, it's up to the board to close the public hearing.
I guess a question would be if, if nothing like this happens where a different use number available and it's chosen by the home, by the first, you know, owns the land. And a lease like that be broken against.
You know, I don't have the details on that lease. So that would be something that would be worth, it would have to be worked out. I don't, I don't want to be into that.
But it's outside our decision.
Right, maybe that's their own done.
Yeah.
Any questions? Anybody have? We'll close the public hearing then. Are you agreeable to that?
Um, we have two days to make a decision. At this point, I think I would recommend that you take a vote. We're doing, I would wait, but everyone is here on this, remember. And the way I would recommend that you do that is to vote on the two public utility variance standards. I would read them aloud and the, the first one to, to take a vote. Bring them to court. I would read the second one aloud. Should take a vote, yes or no, bring them to court. And either way, direct me to prepare findings of that and conditions of approval uh, for your review and approval that you're not striking this completely.
Is there any reason to have a discussion amongst the board?
Like a executive session or?
No, no, I mean, we've closed the hearing, but still can, we can still discuss. Yes, you know, before the vote, I mean, I don't really have, we've had a ton of information. I'm just throwing it out there. Normally we would have a discussion. We would. If there's any concerns one way or another and.
Here's the question. Do we have, since the people are here, should we go ahead and do that right now rather than going through our rest of the? So. Comments or?
Well, obviously I'm, I've already expressed all my concerns. I don't know how the board feels. I'm pretty sure people know how I feel, but this is an industrial site and I have no problem with solar. I, I really just would like, uh, this to not be in a prime agricultural area. And, and I do believe the visual effects, right now you've got four forty-four, you've got a, you know, you, in Rice Road, you've got one right there, all the entrances into the Finger Lakes, in which all these people come out. Uh, first thing they're going to look at is this beautiful solar. And I, I just think it, the visual aspects, and I also believe the town has spent how many hundreds of thousands, maybe millions between the town and the state to buy up development rights right in this area. You know, to, to designate it as agriculture. I, you know, put it in industrial sites. So as far as I'm concerned, go for it, but not on prime farmland. And that's my opinion.
So the change to the neighborhoods as well. I mean, that would be, it would change a little character of neighborhoods.
I, I consider it industrial site. I mean, the agricultural thing is a dog and pony show. And, and, and I just believe that that's been proven time and time again. You, the, the only reason why farming works in periods is people step up as farmers and do the job. You know, to sub it out. I don't, I haven't seen a tremendous amount of success and I, I could be proven wrong on that. I just, that's my feeling. And I don't know all of that.
From the necessity of the utility, this is an awfully small amount of power going into an area that, um, we already know we have a struggling infrastructure to um, manage our, our colony needs. So it, it isn't solving or gaining us much.
It's going to be for solely us to hear though. Right? Is, is it, this one is going to be for our use or wasn't it going to be downstate?
Now, I have heard mixed things on that. So I, I have heard the same thing. This is actually the power itself is going downstate. So it's not getting us anything. But in case I'm wrong, it doesn't change the fact that it's less important whilst it's noise.
I don't know anything to add.
I'm good.
Right move. And this sentence is written down and will have the application. So you've been, you've been defined. Number one, the relief is a public necessity in that it is required to render safe and adequate electric service. Mr. Outcomes.
Uh, no.
Mr. Cheviet.
No.
Mr. Emmer.
No.
Mr. LaBois.
No.
Mr. Saylor.
Doctor Saylor.
No.
Two, there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that may get more feasible to seek that variance than to seek alternative locations. Mr. Outcomes.
No.
Mr. Cheviet.
No.
Mr. Emmer.
No.
Mr. LaBois.
No.
Doctor Saylor.
No.
I'll prepare signings of that for your review and approval at, uh, next month's Stone Garden. Thank you all for your input. Thanks for the application.
Okay. Moving on to unclosed public hearings. Two, three, one, four Brickyard Road, multiple variants, requesting four variants is some zoning board of appeals. For lots two, hundred variants of fifty feet when a hundred fifty feet required and two hundred fifty proposed. Two hundred is required. Minimum lots of size of a hundred, one acre when two is required. And then for lot three, similar variances. So two variances on each one.
State your name and give us your details for why you wanted the project.
Okay, my name is Marty Mellon, real estate broker. I represent Terry and Debbie Dukowski, the owners of this property. Um, I couldn't tell you why we need variances other than the rules and regulations of the town. Uh, we just did a, on the corner of Brickyard Road and Thomas Road. There were six building lots there. There's houses being built there as we speak. What we want to do is, uh, have two nice one acre building lots uh, from this parcel. You can see them down here at the bottom. It's, it, the, the, just the, uh, the regulations make it difficult to adhere to getting a couple of building lots, build a couple of nice expensive homes. They're over six hundred thousand dollars each, by the way. And, and so we hired, uh, uh, engineer and surveyor to come up with this plot to figure out how to get this put in there. I suggested making the lots deeper than the ones up above, you see, to make them.
You're just talking about these two.
Yeah, yeah. And the rest of the parcel there, they're going to keep, you know, they live back there. And, uh, there's no real way to divide the rest of that. It's kind of wet back in there as you can see. But, uh, that's basically it. We want to build a couple of homes, uh, nice one acre building lots. And, uh,
Those are larger size than.
They're larger than any in the area. Yeah. I may, I, you know, they wanted to make them smaller. I said, make them an acre. That's nice. You know? Put up a nice house. Put up a couple of nice houses and sell them off. That's the original parcel.
Why do you need the road frontage for the original parcel?
Right.
Right here. They've already got it there.
Not much on the existing one. The very small piece. It's kind of narrow there in the driveway and everything and.
Why is it carved out like though in the middle there? Like is what he's asking? Why, why can't we take some, if you were going to divide it, why can't you take some of the footage to, I don't think it sounds like that area.
What you're looking at is the original parcel, carved out. Those are.
I know, but I'm referring to where the plan is set up. You know how you got that one where the two new houses are going in?
Yeah, right there.
So it's that.
Yeah. Well, we wanted to put three in there, but they'd be smaller lots and then they'd be smaller frontage and doesn't make.
But you're only going to do the two, correct?
Yeah.
So what I, I guess what we're saying is why, why can't you just move over a little with the two existing ones maybe?
Eliminate that road finish?
Yeah, to like increase so as.
The pipeline is right there.
Is it?
Well, if we're going to do that, we'd want three lots and they'd be smaller, but it just doesn't work.
No, I, okay.
How much is, what's the easement on the pipeline?
Yeah.
Oh, the answer.
I see.
No, that's still the.
Yeah, right. I mean.
You can't build on a pipeline.
Right.
Really couldn't use that over here, so.
Yeah. Well, I just meant like if you could steal, yeah, some from the other area, but.
We have the distances, uh, distances and the sizes of the existing lots there. And, and I'm assuming somebody grabbed an appearance for those, right?
Other houses on them?
I think they were, they were, they were built before you had the existing rules.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, that's, it's character of the neighborhood, I mean, technically.
Oh, already?
Hmm?
When were they built? Did they seventies?
Oh, I don't know. Those existing homes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say early eighties.
No, I think they probably were.
Yeah.
Rules there.
They're smaller lots.
Yeah, there were lot sized rules.
Nineteen ninety-three, there you go. That one house there, it just went up for tax or closure. And it's all run down. Somebody bought it. They're going to hopefully fix it up. It's a mansion.
These own.
One of those houses.
Yeah, those are those, um.
No.
It's like the road, like condos or whatever.
Those are, no, I mean, the roof is gone on the thing. It's like.
Oh, I was talking about the, the rural houses right there. Yeah.
Just talking about the house that's.
That's, yeah.
I just want to know. It looks like nineteen forty-two.
No. Yeah, how wide is that? Are those lots? I wonder. Yes, and then I would say one hundred.
Hundred fifty.
Let me try to make a one hundred eight.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the?
That was, well, thank you.
I think the ones that, uh, they, they laid out, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're, the new ones are a hundred and fifty, is that right? Yeah.
What is this zone now?
Yeah, one fifty.
Yeah, hundred and fifty feet.
Two fifty-eight.
Yeah, it's an actual spot.
Go up a little bit, Mike. Scroll up. So these are two thirty-three by one fifty.
None of them are a hundred by.
So those are about half an acre blocks. Right, so you.
Well, yeah, they were talking about half acre when I started discussing this and I said, I just make them, it's a nice, make them an acre. Make them bigger, make them nice, and then we can build a nicer house.
Any, any other questions?
No.
Are there any questions from the audience here or at home? You agreeable to closing the public hearing then?
Yeah, it's fine. Sure.
We would have sixty-two days to make a decision. Typically would make a decision.
Okay. Tonight.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
So we're all set?
Yeah.
You don't need me anymore?
You're welcome to stay, but it's.
By the way, I want to commend you on saying, uh, a moment of silence for our troops and the pledge of allegiance. I was at a meeting here, O Hearts in Canada one. I asked about that. They refused. And that kind of bothered me. I like this. Thank you.
Which co-alls?
I know. The next city.
City, wouldn't lose it. Yeah, they said no.
It's too bad.
We'll see you later.
That's it. All right, uh, five, uh, five two, five O County Road sixteen. This is being pulled off, is that correct?
Yeah.
Looks like there's a lot of information we need on that one. We don't know. Okay, so that'll be deferred next week, next Monday morning. Uh, let's see, three nine oh four County Road sixteen. Uh, multiple variances, uh, two, no, or three?
It's three again. Because first thing Mike and I discussed it, and municipal favors are not compelling. Are still considered.
Um, seeking three variance approvals from the zoning boards associated with tear down and rebuild of a single family home. The RLD requesting a front setback variance of twenty-five point two feet and twenty-nine point eight is proposed and fifty-five is required. Questioning a side setback of five feet. I mean, five feet is proposed and ten feet is required. Questioning a lot coverage variance of nine point one percent, when three, thirty-nine point one percent imposed and thirty is required.
Uh, so we need more.
Just wanted to get clarification on that third variance. I know my client had a phone conversation with Mike Murphy and he was saying the opposite of.
We talked about it today.
Okay.
municipal favors are still considered.
And that's what my, my, my thought was as well.
Right. Well, yes, that's, that one's still being stated.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, that hasn't changed with.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. I mean, it's impervious. So it increases the infiltration rate based on, you know, your construction of the site, but yeah, you're, you're still developing the site. So that makes sense. Thanks for the clarification. Um, so the existing conditions, there was a, um, a house on there. They have since torn it down. It was just terrible disrepair. There's like three feet of water in the basement and it was just like rotting out the building from the inside. So they took care of that just to clear the site. Um, for the first setback, the front, um, front setback, we are keeping it at the same distance as the existing house. So we're not moving it forward, changing the character in that sense. Um, the second, um, variance for, is for retaining wall, kind of further to the, I guess it's west. Um, where we have the driveway is in line with the existing. Um, where we have the driveway is in line with the existing driveway, so we're not. Bringing it closer to the property line, we're just trying to maintain that line, we wouldn't need a variance for the driveway, but since we are putting a. Retaining wall in, which is needed, so we don't have to grade into the adjacent lot.
Right at the end there?
Yeah, right, it's far left, yeah, right there.
That slope's up.
Um, we are maintaining a five foot setback from the property line, which is pretty standard. Um, and then the third variance for the lot coverage, um. You can see that we aren't going over building coverage. And for the most part, that lot coverage. Overage, uh, is from. Having a lot that size driveway and having a, a parking area to get to the garage that is on the upper portion of. The house, um, they are gonna have a walkout basement, but giving it. Being a, a year-round house, it's nice to drive up to your garage, get out, unload your groceries on the first floor. Instead of going downstairs. And walking upstairs to the main level, so that's kind of. As far as the design goes, that's how we came about with. This solution to have access to the top floor. Are there any?
What are you doing for, like, so you're gonna put the retaining wall in, I mean, what's like, what's the plan for the water mitigation, like turn off and stuff?
Uh, so all the down spots from the house are going into the, um. The front, uh, infiltrate, infiltration trench.
Okay.
So we have, based on the difference of the, a house size, the existing house size and the one we're proposing. It's size well above what that house would need to have, um, mitigation practices.
Right.
What, 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 what does the water, what kind of, uh? Drainage is there now?
Uh, there's, there's nothing, nothing, no.
So it'll be an improvement.
It's, yeah, it is an improvement. Um, based on the close proximity to the. Existing, um, contours and topo to the. German brothers, it's hard to put in practices. Um, for that portion of the site, um. The to, upper part, which we have now proposed. Previous pavement, that portion where it's much flatter, that will be contained and will be infiltrated underneath the previous pavers, but. That. Asphalt portion of the driveway, it is fairly steep, we've maxed out to the allowable driveways, um, slope. And it's better to have asphalt than it is to have, um. Permeable pavers, which. So in the, the combination of those two elements, I feel like our mitigation practices are well over what is necessary.
How high is the retaining wall on the back?
Six feet?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yes, uh, Mike, driveway setbacks. Um, it's only ten feet. Seven feet.
But we're using the distance of the existing driveway and, and we're maintaining that. And as it's an existing condition, uh, no variance is needed. Based on other projects I've done in the town and that's been allowed.
There's. That's the case, though, if you tear down. So it's five feet along that whole north.
Correct. You say northbound or south? So.
The house.
Ten feet. It's ten feet on the north.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten feet.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're keeping that, so we don't have. Yeah.
Anyway.
Six feet, seem to have the high for retaining wall.
I mean, well, it is in the steep slopes. So, we're trying to make, that's why we're trying to keep it as compact as possible with that turnaround up top. I mean, you can see that the walkway in is part of the kind of turning radius.
Okay.
So we're trying to use as much as we can to make it feasible for. Access to the project.
Done a seven foot setback from the driveway, that's deferred. But then the existing driveway angles in, right? Driveway stays seven feet from the lot line.
Well, we're, we're straightening out the driveway. So maintain, so it's maintained a consistent distance from the property line, which is not what it does right now.
No, I know.
I, you say you're removing a portion of it there, or not?
What's it, say again?
You said you're. You're maintaining the.
The driver's here.
Yeah.
He's actually going, they're gonna be straightening it out, so it's going straight across from the.
Instead of angle.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be any closer to the most, you're over.
Okay.
And that's seven feet to that corner there.
What's your existing setbacks? Compared to your requested.
Uh, I have a table for that. Yeah.
Front setback are identical.
Correct. But since it's a tear down rebuild, we're. We're, we need a variance because it's a new build. Based on our survey and field shots, that, that is the.
Thirty-seven point three. From the front. Half corner of the house.
Wait, based on the existing conditions?
Yeah.
From the center line? Well, not from the porch. From the porch, it's seven. Would it be from the porch, wouldn't it, the? Closest point to the.
I don't know what kind of porch it is.
My originals, um. My original existing conditions plan had that dimension on it, but survey changed their. Plan to show the steep slopes, I haven't, I, I believe I have an older version of the existing conditions that would show that. Your, the attachments, maybe? No. But the other sheet set. That one. I had it measured at one point. But I can update the existing conditions to show that. But that's what I based the. The setback on. That corner of the, closest corner of the deck.
Oh. Your side setbacks.
So it's the new retaining wall on the side that's five feet from.
Correct, yeah. Cause we can't maintain that slope of the driveway comparison to the steepness of the existing conditions, so we need to put a retaining wall to.
Right.
Kind of have the two mesh.
Your lot coverage does.
How do you, how do you figure? Well, I mean, we're, we're going from the, the, we're going from the original, not the most recent plans, I uploaded those recent plans to. Cause I, I was under the impression that. The lot, the lot coverage was gonna change based on impervious surface, like Mike Murphy had told my client, uh, but so we're sticking with the original. Uh, plans that show, um. A much greater lot coverage, not much, but.
You can't cover the permeable pavers?
No, so e- everything stays the same.
So you need a nine point one percent lot.
Yeah, that's, that's, the, the application is staying the same. Yeah, yeah, so don't go off the plans I submitted today. Go off the ones that were originally submitted. For the, the calculations.
What the request is the same, right?
Yes, my only question is, you know, given those. Restriction of the lot. Is there a way you could design the house a bit differently, maybe not the way they want it, ideally, but where you could use less. Coverage by perhaps bringing the. Drive way in then, into the garage on the side or?
Well, it's, it's a. Two-story with a walkout, based on the, the steepness of that existing grade, there's. Really no other option but to have a walkout basement. And having a, like I said, they wanna have the option to park and go right into their. Kitchen, living area without having to climb a whole bunch of stairs. We've looked at a, a whole bunch of different scenarios and this is the, the one that we came up with that. Caters to my client and without having to get a whole slew of additional variances.
Are you still doing the permeable pavers?
Yeah, that was, we haven't decided on doing that.
Mike, I think.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, uh, just a note for the board, the discussion that I had with the property owner was not related to. Uh, the property owner not needing a variance if they opted for a permeable surface. The discussion was, is that my office issues a recommendation to the zoning board on all lot coverage and building coverage requests within the R L D. Due to the compounding impacts of issuing those variances. Uh, further impacted by the lack of stormwater mitigation that was originally provided on the plans. So what my recommendation was is to provide a permeable surface. To offset the increase of the asphalt driveway and lot coverage. And that that may be looked as as favorable by this board.
Thanks for that clarification, Mike.
How much of the area is going to be the.
Um, you can see it in attached. I.
Yeah. Well, it's important steps.
Well, that's existing, um, I didn't have it in the. The, the asphalt drive is fourteen plus, and I know. It's around sixteen hundred. Uh, of the. Permeable pavers, so. Yeah, I, what, whatever it was, if, if you go to the old, uh, drawing. That included the. Uh, the driveway as a whole. For the calculation, but I. I'm almost certain to plus or minus sixteen hundred as far as the permeable pavers go.
I've always wondered if we work through these permeable surfaces, whether, you know, you could say, well. Thousand square feet of permeable paper is equal to, say, two hundred and fifty square feet of non-permeable.
Unless they don't.
Permeable.
Well, right, right.
Well, meet any. Grass.
But.
Sinking straight in like it would if it was.
But the slope has a lot to do with it, that's why putting those permeable pavers on that steep driveway. Doesn't do it justice, but I put it on a nice flat area that has like two percent slope. The water's gonna move slower and has a better chance of going through the cracks and infiltrating below the pavers.
Trying to say.
And we appreciate your response.
Also.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, can I?
No.
Anyone in the audience?
I'll, I'll just add that I just ruled it, um, that the, uh, this was just one of the permeable, I'm sorry, go groove, groove it. Uh, permeable favor manufacturers claim that the runoff coefficient can be as low as point. One five, uh, as opposed to asphalt being point nine eight, meaning that ninety percent of the water on asphalt runoff.
What's grass?
Point four? Something like that.
That's better than grass.
Depends on the quality of it. It's some, some information. Because I was always curious about it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, um. Mike, can you get that kind of information, all that coordinates?
Yeah, right? That's not a bad idea.
Yeah. Um, are there similar variants, like, I mean, is this a? Of this?
I was gonna ask the same thing, is.
This is pretty typical as far as. The character of the house. The amount of lot coverage we're asking for.
Well, typical doesn't say yes, so. We, we might like to know if there were other things granted that, you know, this isn't a precedent, that's.
Well, I, not on this side of Lake, but the other side of Lake, I have gotten multiple projects with variances. That coincide with lot coverage and building coverage for that matter, and. This is not as intense as those.
Look at the houses next door. Yeah. Pretty sure there's bigger. More coverage on some.
With a wider though.
What's that?
They're wider lots.
Yeah. One right next door, but we isn't. Yeah.
No.
Comfortable closing bolt, true? Are you comfortable closing the bolt here? Here we have sixty two days.
Yes.
You're welcome to stay around.
We'll do.
Make it there.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Middle Cheshire Road, anyone here to present that?
It's mine, right? I am.
A branch response for fifty two point nine foot setback variance from a water course needed one forty seven point one percent uh needs is proposed and hundred feet required. The construction of a single family home.
Hi. Bill Grohl with Grohl Engineering have uh prepared the site plan for the courses um who would like to build a fifteen hundred plus or minus square foot house uh with a attached garage on this lot. Uh on Middle Cheshire Road, it was um it's a a little bit of an interesting lot in that the neighbor behind that thirty seven nineteen um uses the driveway that cuts through the middle of the the property. That thirty seven nineteen does have frontage of its own on Middle Cheshire Road. Um and we did some digging on uh access easements for that driveway. I'm not the way I read it, I'm not sure if there is one, but we definitely wanna maintain that driveway access for the house there uh in the back. So what that forces us to do? Uh no, I think that's some swell of some sort. There is another, there's a culvert um on the you know, the reason that we're here is because of the uh water course, that blue line that runs through that property. There's another culvert um that crosses onto the thirty seven nineteen property in that gap where the blue line stops. So south of the cursor. So in keeping the existing driveway and trying to keep within the building setbacks, um the the house configuration has to be uh like you see it there where it's it's slightly rotated um compared to the Middle Cheshire Road, um but will come in using the the existing driveway, so it'll become kind of a shared driveway between the two properties. And when we put the the site plan together, I honestly had forgotten about the hundred foot uh requirement to be away from water courses. And I didn't know that that was big enough to be a water course, so um town let me know that it was, and so that's why we are here with the uh with a variance request. Uh on that plan, I don't know if you can see it or not, there's a green dash line that cuts through kind of the middle of the house, uh not that one. Uh yep, so that's the hundred foot setback and as it goes um past the covered porch, it uh kind of angles to the northwest because that water course um once it um goes, I'm just gonna come up there.
Yeah. Yeah.
It comes from from up here and wants to have farewell to the property line, the crosses through two sets of culverts here and there's that third culvert. On that neighborhood property. So this this green line is the hundred foot uh setback.
How was this lot created? Who owned it before this?
I don't know. I know it was part of it was the Highlands Group was the um.
It wasn't the person that had the driveway on it, was it?
I don't believe so. It was part in in reading the um the easement language, which I think I'm not an attorney, so I shouldn't probably say, I think the easement was for that strip of property um right there where the cursor is that it gives the the that it's like something weird with that, but it's not really clear to me, so we don't wanna try to block that driveway in. No, it's it's in the uh the cloud permit stuff. We did submit that.
Those line, those lot lines was angle lot lines line up, so I bet it was all done at the same time.
Yeah, on the survey, it doesn't show up as a, I mean, the driveway shows up and then it but even the driveway isn't centered on the previous center line drive of the driveway.
Well, it's difficult for me to understand how somebody just goes ahead and puts their driveway across somebody else's property unless they owned it, and it's difficult to to grant variances on a piece of property if somebody created the the problem.
But I guess regardless, well, the driveway does constrict us some into that south side there. It's.
Didn't we break up?
Driver. Yes, yes, so yep, they've they haven't owned it for very long.
The homeowner at thirty seven nineteen contacted our office and asked if she's going to lose the driveway. I said, no, it's still your driveway. You still have an easement to use it. She goes, oh, I had no problem with anything. I said, submit that, but she didn't.
So they don't have, they don't own that uh
No.
One twelve old no property there, you know, upstream, I guess.
Non-conforming ones, yeah.
That's a totally different owner then.
Correct, that's still Highlands Group, I think, owned that that uh that that lot that's highlighted as well as the next lot in Worth.
Oh.
Maybe they've sold it since then, I'm not sure.
It's for EA. That same one, so those two are the same.
Where are the wetlands? Probably in the south of that property, I wonder how far back.
Pick a little section of it south.
One of the part of our conservation boards. Yes, to allow that buffer. What's there remain?
Yes, yep, and that's our intention as well. And even that, um is it is that wetland area extends north that doesn't follow the it must have, you know, from a previous version. I don't know if they diverted the stream, I would guess that they did because it does that. Yeah, all of this property line now comes up through here, turns around here over the process.
Yeah.
Since I'm up here, I also wanna point out that, you know, the proximity of that structure to the water course, it's like totally. We keep saying water course, it's a ditch, it's a it's a thirty six inch pipe across the driveways there, it's really not.
I don't think I've ever seen.
There's none today, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Well, there was water in Black River. I I mean, I not not to comment any on the legal profession, but I certainly cannot imagine feel the need to. How could anybody advise their client to buy that piece of property with the way that is? I I mean.
Well, the way it usually happens is they subdivide the lot off. If they build their out their driveway into, oh, they subdivide this off, but it's not recent, I honestly don't know.
I can get a call for that lot since last year, a lot for sale. Everybody asking about that.
Why did it, it's not created recently, right?
Uh no, like it was sometime last year.
That it was created?
That 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 is subdivided.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and they um they asked me exactly what's gonna be the issue.
They might not have legal access. Well, that kind of has some access to the Middle Cheshire Road that.
Feel like, yeah, if it came down to it, they do have the that southern or uh southern portion of thirty seven nineteen. That they could put a driveway through and get across, is there the existing culvert, there's a, you know, a lane way through there now.
Is that a gravel drive?
The existing, yes, yes, it is.
But if we move to the northern lot line?
Yeah. But the so in right there, in the midst of s- um submitting this site plan. Um it came to our attention that there is not sewer at the road, even though on course says there is. So there was a a sketch that I had forgotten, but years ago I drew for a potential buyer of the uh the two laps north there. To extend the sewer, so it's been done a couple, at least once through that section where um that like thirty six ninety nine, I think it was, um wanted to build on that lot and they had to extend the sewer main and put a manhole. It may have been the next lot north, but some it it's somewhere in that stretch, it stops um and it I had prepared a sketch for uh prospective buyer. And it never got installed. And so now we are going to have to put a septic system on that lot. So we were there last week with the watershed inspector to do soil testing. Um and the only spot we could find that would work for that would be the north side of that driveway up uh as tight as possible to the road.
All right, so.
Yeah, right there, yeah, there's a big walnut tree um there, but I think we can avoid having to take that down and keep the system in there.
I mean, if we have two parties who are willing to share a driveway, it'd be, I mean.
That's kind of outsider.
Well, no, I mean, but we shouldn't hold that against them, I guess, for our safe.
No, I get that.
Reduces the number of.
Well, some some lots might not be all should be developed.
Right.
Oh, the uh ECB did recommend um relocating the concrete washout and the staging area. So I think that's simple enough to do, we can move that topsoil stockpile over and fit everything in the in that front yard area. Maintain that buffer along the the rear of the property where the water horse flows through.
This reminds me of the Elmira Water.
Okay, we all set then? Okay, we're closing the public.
Yeah, I believe so.
No comments from the. All right, we'll close the public here.
Thank you.
So basically, that one's just the water, like that's what the issue were.
For me.
We're only on that one, we're only voting on.
Rather than talk about the last one, I'll be moving along anyway. Okay, um. Three nine oh four County Road sixteen.
I acknowledge my team.
You're gonna go back to Brickyard?
No, I was gonna go back just cause we have. So go to three nine oh four County Road sixteen.
Alrighty, okay. I'm I'm ready. I think the plan looks like they tried to stay within the existing lines. I I said, I think the plans look like they tried to stay within the existing lines. They put it where the previous house was, they kept the driveway that way. I I don't know if everything seemed pretty reasonable. I I don't think permeable pavers are permeable or shouldn't. They should count as lot coverage, so. Or at least not as as much, right?
Wait, you think they should count as lot coverage?
Absolutely.
Which which they do, right?
Yes.
Which they do, right?
Yes, they do.
I mean.
Oh, that.
But they do count as lot covered, but they may not be.
Oh, no, I disagree with that part violently. I think permeable is an absolute fallacy. My humble opinion.
I was gonna go with, you know, sort of a point five or something.
No, no, no. I love the intention is there, but the reality is, no.
People ready to vote?
Yeah, I guess so.
Call the questions.
Sure.
So you've got three variances to vote on. The first is shall the front setback variance of twenty five point two feet be granted? Shannon?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Second, shall the side setback variance of five feet be granted? Shannon?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Kelly?
I'm gonna say no.
Chip?
Yes.
And the third, shall the lot coverage variance nine point one percent be granted? Shannon?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Okay, boys. I think this is the county county board. Said no, I believe on, did you get any four? Yeah, we got
All were.
All fours, but one.
Yeah.
Three to two.
I got the issue with a lot.
Oh.
You got two no's on the shall side setback varies of five feet granted.
Say no, right? So that one's denied. They settled down approval. And great, just to just say deny based on family. So based on failure required or based on failure to override county planning board recommendation of denial. So want to get the reasons here then.
The deniler for.
Denial, we don't.
Yeah, we don't usually give it.
That's it.
Character of the neighborhood. It's kind of keeping in, right?
Are there other similar lot coverages and setbacks?
Well, that's why I don't, I mean, I'm I'm assuming.
Don't think it was self-created, so no reason.
The whole thing is. Just just the one.
So there's two variances past one.
Right. Yes.
Which one is denied?
The five.
No, he has two variances if he can get the, it's just a retaining wall, right? It's a retaining wall, yeah. You can move that to where it needs to be, then you can build what you wanna build. So if I put it in line with the driveway? I might talk to, you gotta talk to Mike on that tomorrow. Okay, yeah, that's.
So this one's granted.
Two of the three are going to, yes. The two where there are four votes.
We have intended to separate.
Um sometimes you do it, and it's your decision, it's the board's decision on when to separate. If if you should separate, if you're gonna vote no on all of them, no reason to take them separately, if you're gonna vote yes on them, just don't take it separately. Correct, I think rightly. Just headed towards voting on them separately, nobody said, hey, let's do them all together, and I think that's the right way. Obviously, right, because turns out you wanted to vote separate. Thank you. Nice, hi.
You too.
So for the ones that were approved, they don't have all the reasons why they were.
Ones. Yeah, I mean.
Under condition, right?
That being self-created.
Yep, it's not, I in my humble opinion, they weren't substantial, they. Yep, it's not, I in my humble opinion, they weren't substantial, they um. Benefit outweighs the detriment, yeah, all the normal stuff.
There you go. Part of Mr. Bill, middle pressure rubber.
I said might be, some lots aren't made to be developed. This is, I mean, if it's a new build, I don't think that this does anything to but compound the existing problems that are already there.
If the water wasn't there, wouldn't have, wouldn't be an issue, right? I mean, this is basically.
Basically blurred by ditch, so. I think it's pretty far away from myself.
Yeah, I think that whole areas, like the whole divide division there is just. Seems to. Call the question, sure, I'm just wanting to put that.
Now, the requested variance, that's what we granted, Shannon?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Uh, benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. Um. This is an unusual lot. Um, placement of the house is dictated certainly somewhat by. Straneous driveway going through um.
Yeah, I did think we should keep it a condition like that the ECB recommended that they keep the buffer.
Right.
It's uh, the adjacent block is as a as a structure part forty feet away. From the blue line there, when the. Proposed structure is approximately.
Forty seven.
So would, yeah, so a condition would be in the back of the lot, develop. Septic systems. The conditions will be uh as for limited tonight, and they have one year.
And. The ECB says.
Important. Did not hear too much longer, so.
Has much to do with.
I was gonna say, I.
No, wait, 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 we have to do Brickyard.
Yeah, we will.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I don't have any problems with this, I think. Certainly keeping with the neighborhood.
It's a keeping with the neighborhood, but philosophically, I'm struggling with this one. I know. Um, the the code is two acres because we wanna keep it less densely populated. Um, in into the zone, um, and while they did this before and they made a profit. On it, fine, but I think we need to stick with the new rules, that's why the rules were created. My humble thinking. See the wheels turning. It's like see the wheels turning.
No, I I understand. Since I look at the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, what was the zoning across the street, that's that's.
That's insane, right? Yeah, that's a.
Well, I mean, that's.
That's all, you know, like.
That's the thing, the character of the neighborhood is already.
Right? Yep, but the the character of the neighborhood was established before the zone zoning rule was, so.
Would be interesting to know, I don't remember reviewing that. For variance. Across the street, yeah, no, no. On the same side of the.
Oh, is it?
During the eighties and nineties. Yeah, we gained five, ninety six, ninety eight. But they may not have needed a parent right then.
Well, and that's where, I mean, like, literally, the house is right over from that with a hundred foot front, you know, I mean.
Yeah, so I guess. I don't just, I think Shannon's dead on. Except that this is where the AR two meets some other zones district, I don't know what's on the east side of the dirt. But it can't be the AR two, because it got multi-family representation that they be. Which. I mean, it's supposed to follow the goal of the zoning district, but we're. You know.
And I don't, I you know, I mean, clearly, we, it doesn't matter what type of homes went on there, he was. You know. I don't use that as a factor, I don't think he was very well versed to come up. And represent.
Kind of a, it's kind of a tough neighborhood, I mean, you got the airport down the road. Which is where the solar, oh, you know.
Right on the airport, like there, yeah.
So it's adjacent to plenty of development, which is more that families mostly.
Right.
That would certainly be.
It actually may even be different from the character of the neighborhood with those big houses.
Talking about two lots.
Yeah, but. If the next, if the next lot wanted to do it in the next, I mean, where do you stop, where do you draw the line, it's saying it's okay for them and not.
I mean, they could make two acre lots to the right throat, but.
Yep. Right. They could just make them deeper and go to to acres, but. That was why I was asking about that other.
Yeah, you asked, but he didn't know.
He didn't, he was saying, well, is there, there's a pipe that goes through there? Is there? But that just means don't put the house on top of it. Right, well.
Close through the first.
Lot.
Through first law, so they have the setbacks are set on an angle there, but. I I know what you're trying to say, expand both lots.
Right.
Use up that. Yeah, but I think that puts lot two almost in time, I I think I understand, that puts lot two almost entirely. In over un-unbuildable area, right?
Yeah, I do, but I mean, there could be. Instead of putting them just square here and here, maybe it changed the.
Yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah, that would put it entirely in the transmission.
So you you they wouldn't be reasonable, is what you're saying.
Maybe. Maybe that right here will be a little bit of.
Yeah, I was kinda wondering if maybe they.
That looks like a hill and also looks like back corner of a parcel that wouldn't.
I don't think, I don't think that any of that parcel was farmed, I know.
There's a pond on it.
So, is it a cluster?
There's NRI areas on those, oh, there's also NRI areas that limit buildable area.
So they may end up having issues anyway, right? I mean, with that lot. Try to put something on it.
Do you wanna reopen the hearing and ask more about why they can't build two acre lots? Cause we're just sort of guessing, this is our, I mean, we're just sort of.
He didn't answer what, like, when, and they kept saying three lots. Yeah. There's, yeah.
A little more information here, or do you wanna vote?
If we told him, he's gotta have more information next time, he will hopefully come prepared with that information.
Yeah, right, I don't think he gave a good.
I mean, I make a motion that we open the hearing, I guess, again. So if I think Shannon's got a viable. Point that's.
Right, I mean, we wanna make sure not, you know, just because.
You can think about where the pipeline's gonna be and what how it works for them, but it's. It is zone.
You could argue if you. Made that wider. You also made a birth, there would be room to put a house possibly on the pipeline.
Hey, by my estimation, you're making two acres, start about here. This lot is a nice big lot, but this lot. Buildable area will be here over it, right? Which is almost. I think you could get a driveway, honestly. If you cross there, maybe some of the driveline, and that might be a wrong one, so I'm like.
Dave's motioned not real.
A second.
On favors?
You wanna invite people to debate the? Yeah.
Very well prepared.
I don't think you have. Yeah, I know, right?
Well done.
I can talk to that just a little bit because I'm actually on the committee, the uh Open Space Committee that actually contracted with Libella.
Okay.
And and has he's on, um, basically, as we were trying to, so Open Space. The committee tries to go through and identify, so we can contact homeowners to say, hey, do you do a real estate, you wanna do a, you wanna reserve it, that kinda stuff. Um, in trying to identify parcels of high value, it's just the mans are super, super outdated. Um, and so it's just a, it's a kind of a universal refresh, so very very much needed to be able to.
Oh, yeah.
Identify what actually matters.
County Planning Board was very proactive for it.
Yeah. They do a little cheer.
And we probably just can, you know, make a motion that we. It's a proof, thank you, I think, great idea, will help our job be easier on.
We put our stamp on it.
It will.
That works, I mean.
Are you okay with that? Alright, let's see.
Chuck, were you present during the solar vote, so you know the answer there?
If you always have Choco on it.
It says email it does.
Yeah, usually it's a.
But I thought usually he has Chuck whole period.
Yeah, like. I like.
Referrals from town board, referrals from town manager, ordinance committee. Okay, minutes of the last meeting.
Oops, okay. Uh, I have to make a motion of improvement. Anybody have any, see anything on that?
I read through them, but there was a lot there.
There was a lot. There was a lot there. I didn't notice anything.
Nothing jumped out at me, but there is a lot there.
Seeing that I had skim, yeah. On the plane, um, I make a motion to approve.
All second.
All favor?
After it's standing, so I wasn't there.
Alright, that works.
Although you thought I was there.
This guy.
Thank you, oh, um. May I have a knee replacement?
Oh, good luck.
The night of our next meeting.
You may?
Unless it gets pushed off, I don't know.
Is it local, can you do Zoom? Just turn it on and we have to leave.
For what day? The next meeting? What what day is the next meeting? I heard, I think I'm here, so. Yeah, I'm I'm very, I think I am.
Are we still recording?
Yes. I make a motion to close the meeting.